I'm calling Task Welch, the Community Minister of the Community of Christ Church in Milton to lead our implications this evening.
Father, we should always be in awe that we have the freedom to assemble, that we have the freedom to elect officials, to have governments, that all of what has gone before us in history has just given us these freedoms, but we should never be complacent. And Father, I just ask now that you be with this meeting, with all the people involved, with those that are elected, the staff, the citizens, the business owners. Each of the items on the agenda is very important, and I just ask that you help us to have clarity, that you help us to do everything that we need to do to keep the City of Milton in order and continue the way that it has been running. Give you thanks, give you thanks for each person in this room, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Good evening again. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, June 20, 2011, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor, President, and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the June 20, 2011, regular meeting, however, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order, the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood is absent and excused. Mayor Potem Bert Hewitt will be presiding tonight. Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zollzoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tark.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand is, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you all for coming this evening. Will the clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda, agenda item number 11-126.
Are there any items to be, other items to be considered for the agenda?
Executive session litigation.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as modified?
I move to approve the meeting agenda as modified, second.
All right, we've got a motion made by Councilperson Lusk, seconded by Councilperson Longoria, to approve the agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Yeah, are there any public comments?
Yes, sir, we have one, Mr. Mark Coleman.
Okay.
Welcome, thank you. My name is Mark Coleman, I actually live at 955 Pleasant Hollow Trail, my property is actually directly behind Mr. Seeger's, and I kind of just wanted to speak out and support.
But this might, this would probably fall under the zoning.
Yes.
Item, not general public.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We'll put you right through that.
Okay.
It's about eight minutes and then we'll.
Okay, my apologies.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Is that, is there any other?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk please sound the items?
Our first item is approval of the May 9, 2011 work session minutes, agenda item number 11-127. Next is approval of financial statements for the period ending October 2010, agenda item number 11-128. Approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Wilverton Associates, Inc., for the drainage improvements located between Densmore Road and Scarlet Oak Trail, agenda item number 11-129. Fourth is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Milton and Gov. Deals, Inc., for online auction services to dispose of surplus capital assets, agenda item number 11-130. Our fifth and final consent agenda item is approval of a license agreement for local government entities between American Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers and the City of Milton, Georgia, agenda item number 11-131.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda items, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, made by Councilperson Tark, seconded by Councilperson Thurman, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. There are no reports and presentations this evening, so we'll be moving on to the first presentation. Will the clerk please sound the items?
First item is approval of an amendment to the alcohol ordinance to include provisions to allow ungravelled bagging, agenda item number 11-132. Second, approval of an ordinance of the City Council to authorize Fulton County to conduct election, agenda item number 11-133. Next, approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 7, alcoholic beverages of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, to authorize the package sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits by certain retail package licensees during certain hours on Sundays, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to authorize a referendum on the package sale of alcoholic beverages on Sundays, and for other lawful purposes. This is agenda item number 11-134.
All right, is there a motion and a second?
I'll move to approve the reading of the first presentations for the three items listed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that was made by Councilperson Lusk and seconded by Councilperson Thurman, to approve the first presentation items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? There are no items under public hearings this evening. Moving on to the zoning agenda, will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Our zoning rules are as follows. At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations were forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Department of Community Development to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. Violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item is RZ 11-13 VC 11-02, 14355 Providence Road and Haystack Lane, by Seeger's and Sneidau, LLC, to rezone from C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural to OI Office Institutional and AG1 Agricultural, to expand an existing building and two existing buildings for a total of 5,740 square feet with the following four-part concurrent variants. One, Section 64730C1, to reduce the 40-foot side yard setback to 10 feet along the east property line. Second, Section 641433E, to allow off-street parking within the side corner yard along the east property line. Third, Section 6411413A, to reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the west property line to 20 feet. Fourth, Section 6411413A, to reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the north property line to 0 feet. This is agenda item number 11-116. First presentation was on June 6, 2011. Ms. Lynn Tully.
Good evening. I'll call your attention to the subject site, just to kind of walk through it, because this is a little bit of an oddity as it comes to you. It has been heard by the Planning Commission, they did make recommendation. The existing C1 district is 1.61 acres. The existing C1 district encompasses an area that includes a roadway and parts of some lots in a relatively, relatively recent subdivision. As it turns out, this is a zoning from 1973, and when we went back to look at the legal description from 1973, and believe it or not, we were able to find that legal description, we found that this zoning is in the wrong place, just to put it as bluntly as I can. For years, they have been using the office building as an office building, it's been a couple of different things, but primarily an office building. Mr. Seeger owns it now and has been using it as an office building for several years, and it's not actually included in the C1 zoning as everyone thought it was. So what he's trying to do tonight is to get it into compliance along with the accessory buildings that are being used for that business, and to rezone the portion that's really not intended to be commercial, back on the lots and the road and the other areas, back to AG1. So what we're trying to do is make this work, and it's going to take a couple of variances, it takes four, in order to get this to a place where it's legally and conforming. I will say that the applicant is intending to and has an application for a building permit, so he's intending to expand, and that square footage is included in this zoning report, so. If you'll look with me, again, the existing C1 is 1.61 acres, and the intent is to rezone the current parcel where the portion of C1 is, to include O and I for 1.32 acres, so what is considered commercial will actually be reduced by a little bit according to this zoning proposal. The rest would be then going back to AG1 Agricultural District. So in doing this, we need four variances. Those four variances are to reduce the 40-foot side yard setback adjacent to the street to 10 feet along the eastern property line, and you'll notice that the eastern accessory building is in that area, there's a retaining wall and landscaping a long haystack lane, so there's not necessarily a need for additional buffering, because those things are provided by that screening. So this doesn't offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance, it doesn't cause any substantial detriment in his ensuring of the public safety, health, and welfare. So staff did recommend approval as well as Planning Commission of this, Part 1 of this variance. Part 3 and 4 reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the western property line to a 20-foot buffer, and also reduces the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the northern property line to 0 feet. Again, if you'll noticed, the existing single, well, the existing western property is owned by the property owner, owned by the applicant as well, and it's his single-family residence, and then the adjoining single-family residence to the north, excuse me, to the west is his and to the north is his, to the west is a renter occupied structure and to the north is his own personal structure. So at the rear of the office, there is a fully landscaped area, he spent considerable time putting that landscaping area in, and it includes a lot of what we would consider significant trees. And again, this is a situation that was not caused by the applicant and potentially could offend the spirit or the intent of the zoning ordinance by removing those trees and that existing, impeding that existing vista. So staff has recommended and Planning Commission concurred with these two parts, Part 3 and Part 4. Part 2 of the variance is to allow off-street parking within the side corner yard along the eastern property line. You'll note on the site plan that the handicap parking spaces and two additional standard spaces are located in the only area available for access to the office building itself. So the handicap spaces are, to the best of his ability, close to those, close to that building. Again, it is staff's opinion that granting off-street parking within this side corner yard in this particular case doesn't offend the spirit of the ordinance, and staff has recommended approval conditional of that variance request, as well as Planning Commission. So just as a note, there are 12 parking spaces shown and there are 10 required, they are currently gravel parking spaces, and the conditions include those parking spaces remaining gravel, so that there's, with the exception of obviously the handicap space. So we shouldn't have a lot of change in the conditions there. I'm going to move on, the applicant did meet with the design review board as well as the Planning Commission, they also held a public involvement and participation meeting and has prepared that report. The standards of review, I'm going to go through those really quickly, whether or not this proposal permits a use that is suitable in the view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The majority of the property adjacent is owned by the applicant and is used as a single-family residential. And the location of this office was presumed to be C1 for many years, and because it's been improved and used for an office for this period of time, we don't feel like that zoning it to O and I is going to inhibit any of those existing uses. Again, they were there at the same time as this use was occurring, so. Number 2, whether or not the proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. Staff's opinion, this proposal does not adversely affect those uses. Number 3, whether the property is to be affected by the proposal, the property to be affected by the proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. As you would note, the C1, as it is currently zoned, shows a road through it, as well as the front portion of some residential, or what are intended to be residential lots, truly it is not usable as C1 property as it is currently laid out on the map. And again, that's an unusual recommendation, but it's an unusual, an unusual situation. Number 4, whether the proposal will result in a use which could or will cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools, and we do not anticipate any significant burden. And number 5, whether the proposal is in conformity with the policies and intent of the land use plan. The future land use plan does show this area as agricultural, again, this is a situation which has been in existence for many years. Number 6, whether there are existing or changed conditions affecting the use and development of the property that give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the proposal. In particular, the area that is to be rezoned to O and I is smaller than the existing C1 parcel, and therefore is expected to have even less potential impact on any adjacent and nearby properties. The variances are intended to correct what is an existing condition such that the property can be legal conforming. And number 7, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use which can be considered environmentally adverse to the natural resources environment and citizens of the City of Milton, and we do not expect any, anticipate any environmentally adverse effects. So as I mentioned, staff has recommended approval with conditions for this site, the Planning Commission concurred, and then, and in fact added an additional condition, I'll call your attention to Condition 3G, where Planning Commission has requested the condition that if the subject property is to be sold, that the 50-foot undisturbed buffer along the northern property line shall be then required. And that's in the event of a sale of that property. Are there any questions?
Anybody got any questions from staff at this point? Go ahead, Alan.
Thank you. Regarding the parking requirements, I know that 12, 10 are required and 12 are on the site plan.
That's right.
How many are on the current site plan, the one that's there now? How many parking spaces are there now?
It's the same.
It's the same.
I don't think they have added any, and I'm going to double check against the map here, because it's currently all gravel, they've just striped out these parking spaces.
I just didn't know whether they were planning to increase the size of the gravel parking lot or leaving it the same.
No, sir, no, sir, it's the same.
Okay. I just want to push that out.
Yeah, Lynn, the clause that we're recommending that, you know, in case of sale of the property to basically put back in the setback that we're granting an exclusion for now, why does that make sense in your opinion?
Again, this was a recommendation of the Planning Commission, and what they were intending to do was to recreate any potential, or eliminate any potential ill effect for the buyer of either the house or the, or the office building in the future, if they weren't owned by the same person, because currently, like I say, the applicant owns this property to the north, there's an easement for the detention area, and then there's his property, so, his office property. So there's really not a conflict. If he were to sell the house, potentially, you know, somebody could have some concern about that in the future, but as it is, there just isn't one.
Yeah, I just worry that we're putting in something that'll cause a lot of issues.
I will say that when you put in a condition on the sale of a property, which we have done a few times, they are hard for us as code enforcement, it's hard for them to enforce because we don't always know when the property sells, but at least we have that to fall back on if it ever does, if it ever does become an issue, so.
Okay. All right. Karen?
Yeah, I've got a question concerning the same thing, because, I mean, I can see putting in an undisturbed buffer if the area truly is undisturbed, but clearly this has been disturbed in a, in a positive manner, so why would you want to go back to not being undisturbed? Is there a way to put in there that additional screening might be required, additional trees required or something, rather than just saying it's a disturbed buffer, if it, if it's sold, I mean?
Um, yes, ma'am, let me think about that for just a minute.
It just seems like it would make more sense to have to, if it's sold, to put in a few more trees, and it would be just to let it go back to trying to be natural when it looks pretty nice.
You could say a 50-foot opaque planted buffer. You could say a 50-foot opaque planted buffer. And that way, it could be done with vegetation and not be able to be seen through.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that just makes more sense. I don't know, does that make more sense to have a planted buffer rather than undisturbed?
Or maybe use the term replanted to, and we talked about this earlier today.
That would work as well.
Because it's obviously already been disturbed.
Yeah.
How do you restore an undisturbed?
Yeah, that's what I wasn't sure about, especially when it's.
But you could then put in a 50-foot either opaque, maybe replanted buffer to address it, and it, and it's in the event should something be picked up in the future.
Bill, did you have some further comments?
I just did.
You're done? All right, well, why don't we go on and hear some comments from those in support and opposition? First, we'll hear from those speaking in support of RZ 11-13, VZ 11-02.
Our first comment comes from Mr. Don Rolader.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, I'm Don Rolader, 11660 Alphata Highway, Suite 630, Roswell, Georgia. I represent the applicant in this application and will be speaking on his behalf, so I appreciate being first. We have a theme for you tonight, and it comes from a Jimmy Buffett song, "Margaritaville." The theme is "How it got here, I haven't a clue." And that's Barry Seeger's reaction when he went to Robin last fall to get a permit to add on to his existing office building. She said, "Sure, be glad to help you," and they both scratched their heads, and bottom-line result after a lot of research is the commercial zoning that's supposed to sit around this house sat in the middle of Haystack Lane, blocked the development of three lots that are up for sale for residential development, and just barely got part of Barry's office building in it. So we all went, "Oh, me," and so here we are tonight. We're here to fix that. Barry's had his office there for eight years. He developed the Hayfield subdivision. His home sits immediately behind this. This home dates back to 1890s, it was originally the old Westbrook House, and it's a magnificent thing to behold. We had a neighbor gathering out there, and I went and visited with Barry as well. It's like a park. So I agree with your feelings about why would you put in a buffer and you'd have to tear out a park to do it. But nonetheless, he wound up in this position, so our decision was it doesn't need to be commercial. It's an office. We've been there forever. It looks like a house. It's pretty, so we'll just ask you to zone it O&amp;I, and basically what we did is take the footprint and flip it over to where it fits around the house. So that's, in essence, everything we're up to. We took time with staff to discuss the variances and to make sure that we hopefully get this right the first time so that the property works as is. The only thing different that will occur on this property is just a little bit to one side and in the back, Barry's gonna expand the building. And that's about all that goes with it. We'll have to pave the one parking place to make it fit the code. Other than that, we don't intend to do a thing. It's gravel. There's a beautiful entry with a millstone in the middle. There's an old iron pot, there are flowers all around it. It's worth seeing. It's a gorgeous thing. So Barry's representation to his neighbors and to his community has been, "I'll be as good a neighbor as I can, and I'll be as good a neighbor as long as I can." The interesting factor now is, is that Hayfield subdivision has caught interest. The lot behind Barry's, we closed two or three weeks ago. There's another lot that we'll close July the 8th. It's underway. He has strong interest in a lot that's right in the middle of this commercial footprint, and he can't sell it until we fix it. So we have a vested interest tonight in asking you to please help us go ahead and fix this. I think the four variances are self-explanatory. The beauty of the property is self-explanatory. The only two comments we have, I would agree with some of your concerns in that adding 3G, which was just a thought the planning commission had, may do more harm than good. It's a park back there. It's beautiful. If a new neighbor wanted some more enhanced landscaping, then that's fine, but I'm sure Barry would do it. As long as he's living and breathing and he's making money, I don't think he intends to leave us. But you have to contemplate the future. The other comment I have, and it may be more in the form of a question from Mr. Lucas, is looking at Condition 4A talks about enhancing, improving the driveway. That's a beautiful rural residential area, and I would not want to make any changes to that driveway presently with the use being the same as it is, which might alter the character and the appearance of Providence Road. I understand if the use increased in the future that we'd have to comply with Chapter 48 of the code, and so I may or may not have an objection there or a question. I may just ask you to ask Mr. Lucas to clarify for us. With just the addition to the existing house that we intend as part of this application, I don't think we want a commercial driveway there. I think we want to leave it like it looks, but that's my question for staff. Other than that, I have David Burry, a principal and David Burry Engineers and Surveyors here with me tonight and Barry Seeger to answer any questions that you might have. Other than that, we'd like to reserve at this time the remainder of our time for rebuttal and invite you to any questions you have.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and hear if there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition of RZ 11-13. Are there, I'm sorry, are there more people?
There are more in support. We have Mr. Mark Coleman. We have 5 minutes 34 seconds on the clock.
And if you, if you agree with what, what it said, if you, if you don't want to spend the time, you can certainly just say, "I agree" or do whatever you'd like to say.
I would just like to concur with Barry's lawyer. I'm actually, just so you understand, my property is actually directly behind Barry's, so it's directly north of the property in question, across from the lake, which is actually 955 Pleasant Hollow Trail. And, you know, I support what Barry's doing. Barry has always offered up, or is a classy guy. You have to see the landscaping to understand Hayfield. You have to see what he's done. When I've ever addressed any concerns with Barry, Barry's been very diligent about correcting anything. So I really don't think that, I personally don't believe that there would be an issue here. I think if there was any builder or contractor that I would want to have responsibility for that property would be Barry. As Barry's lawyer indicated, you know, Barry actually has a house, he and the property adjacent, and he probably has more of a vested interest than I do. And again, I trust him fully in terms of his ability to do the right thing and develop that property accordingly, so.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Is anybody else that wants to speak in support of the application?
No, sir, there's not, and there's no opposition.
Okay. All right, well, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further council discussion? Maybe we'll just, if everybody has some comments, you want to start with Karen? Are you ready or just go down the list?
Sure. My only question is concerning that Condition 4 and what is gonna be required as far as the driveway, because I happen to agree. I think probably 90% of the people who drive by there think it's a beautiful old house, and they don't know it's a business, and if you put in a commercial driveway, it's gonna totally change the look of it. So I kind of like it the way it is. I drive by it every day.
We're fine with the condition as it's written. We've looked at the entrance from a safety standpoint, and I think it operates fine at this point. We just want to reserve the right that if there's any change in use or additional, significant additions to the property, that we have the ability to evaluate it at that point, and I think we're fine with the condition.
Then you're fine with the driveways that it is now for what they're explaining they're gonna do with it.
But not the condition.
And my only other thing is I do like the opaque planted buffer much better than I currently is written, so, undisturbed.
Karen, is that all?
That's it.
All right, Julie, how about you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor President. Just a quick question, either for the applicant and/or for Mr. Rolader. I know in the analysis, it mentions that the accessory uses are non-heated, that they're used just for storage. And if you could just speak to the fact that that's your intent to keep those as non-heated storage accessory uses? That's what it says. I just wanted to have you speak to that briefly.
Barry Seeger's, 14355 Providence Road. It's our intent to keep them unheated and just strictly used for storage.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I would just suggest that we just specify, because it, earlier in the analysis, it talks about the accessory uses, and if we, and earlier in the analysis, it refers to them as unheated storage accessory buildings. So under 1A, I would just recommend that we insert the language that says within two non-heated existing storage accessory buildings. And again, those accessory buildings, they're attractive, they look good, and it just confirms what you just said. And I see you nodding affirmation that you would support that. And it just clarifies that there's not any lack of understanding. And also, I would suggest if under 1A, if we can also refer to current structure when it makes reference to the 3,500 square feet, to the point of the applicant, it's a wonderful historic structure. It's been carefully and beautifully taken care of. So I know that the intent is to keep that current structure. Would you be satisfied if we just simply also referred to the current structure?
I wouldn't want to restrict the zoning to the current structure. We have no intentions to tear the current structure down or to harm it in any fashion. We're gonna do in addition to it. But if lightning struck it or a tornado took it, we'd have to replace it. So that, that's my response, is we have no intention to tear it down, only to modify it by adding in the rear.
Thank you so much. Obviously, if the building were burned down, that would be a different matter because the existing structure would no longer be existing, and nature would have taken care of it. But obviously, part of this fix is because it's a structure that's beautiful, that is historic, that's there. And I think that that's why the community supports having it be what it is. So if the applicant is comfortable with that, I would suggest that we clarify that it's based on the historic structure that's in place, and obviously if, if there are other things that happen. And Mr. Gerard, would there be any, would there be anything, if we just inserted the language in the current structure, including obviously the expansion, is there a clause that we could say that would account for lightning, fire?
Any sort of.
Natural disaster, you know, short of any natural disaster?
There is language that we could add to that.
If you could just provide that language, though.
Yeah.
What is the intent for doing that?
Yeah.
Is it the intent that if the entire building were to be demolished, then the awarding of this rezoning and primarily the variances then would be kind of almost reset, and you're looking at a whole different scenario?
Well, I think that the main thing is to mitigate against the unintended consequence if, if it's no longer the current owner with the care that has been provided. If somebody else suddenly became the owner, that they don't come in and demolish this structure, but instead try to use the O&amp;I to create a very different-looking appearance, because it is a very residential area. And I do think the applicant understands the point. It's not to restrict what's being done, it's to ensure that that future use has the same sort of plausibility that it does currently.
Currently, there's no C1, the C1 zoning would no restrictions at all, correct?
Well, no, the structure doesn't have, does the structure have C1?
No, but right next to it. He's giving up the C1 zoning that has no restrictions.
That's correct.
Yeah, but let's remember, we're fixing a problem Fulton County created, you know, I don't know, 30 years ago.
The, the problem was just putting in the wrong lines for the thing, so, yeah.
Exactly. So for all intents and purposes, he thinks, he thought the property until six months ago was C1. So did we. We wouldn't have known about it if you hadn't applied for a building permit. So I think the right thing to do is to move the C1 on top of the property the way it was supposed to be in the first place. I don't think it was meant to be on top of Haygood Road. I don't, unless somebody can fix me on that issue and tell me, "No, Joe, we were trying to zone the road C1."
No, I'm still a little perplexed about how, when it all went in, that it wasn't identified sooner because there was a lot of development that went in at the time. So I'm perplexed as to how it's only been identified six months ago, but that's neither true nor there. My point was simply to protect the property owners that are in that area and to be consistent with the intent of the applicant would be to make reference to the current structures. It does appear that that's the applicant's intent. I personally don't see any objection to that, but it's a suggestion. I think also the fact that it's a historic structure is part of what makes it non-objectionable to those who have spoken in favor of it, as opposed to a two-story office building that would be there. What makes it lovely and compatible is the fact that it's lovely and compatible, and it looks like a housing structure.
All right. Is that all you have right now?
My only other question was on parking. Right now, it just says parking areas. Does the sites, this would be site-specific, so if it was 10 or if it'd be 12, it would make reference to those specific numbers, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it's limited to what's shown on the site plan.
And just a final question for the applicant. Do you have any intent in having that parking utilized for any other use or adjacent use? Okay, would you have any problem having language that would simply say that the parking shall be utilized by this business?
Don't have an objection to that.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right. Bill?
I'm still not clear on Condition 3G. What was, what was the consensus as to how to either reword it or leave it as written?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It was suggested that it be reworded to state, "If the subject property is to be sold, a 50-foot opaque planted buffer along the northern property line shall be required."
Okay.
Is that all you have, Bill?
That's all I have.
How about you, Joe?
Yeah, I, first of all, you know, I see this as really, you know, just changing in writing what has existed for quite some time. I mean, nobody knew that this space wasn't C1 already. And in addition, going to O&amp;I from C1, I think is a much better way of stating what exactly this structure is now, and that's, it's an office building. It's, it's not really heavy use or the heavier use commercial zoning that exists. I personally think that we need to strike 3G because I think that that's just inviting trouble down the road. To me, the property, the way it is and the adjacent property, everybody understands what's there, they, they know the use of the properties in question, and just by changing owners, that doesn't necessarily change anything that's taking place. In fact, the inclusion of 3G potentially puts in a conflict with a new owner and the existing property owners that remain. So, so I think we're inviting trouble and we're inviting difficulty between neighbors if we put something like that in. I would also agree that 4A, we just let the property owner deal with that the way he wants it. The gravel is acceptable to Public Works, and then we just let it remain that way and not have to pave it. But I also don't agree that we should be adding any additional conditions into 1A because, you know, it just, it doesn't make any sense. If, if the time comes when that storage unit needs to be heated because the temperature in Milton starts dropping on a, you know, regular basis, if he needs it heated, he needs it heated. I'm not sure that there's anything to be gained by saying, "Well, those buildings can never be heated." So, so it doesn't make any sense to me to, to add any additional conditions in that way. I'm just for taking out the conditions that don't make sense.
Is that all you have?
Yep.
All right, Alan.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I also still have some concerns with the recommended 4G, but I think I'm more of a blended approach between what has been recommended, 3G?
Yeah.
Yeah. What did I say?
4G.
I'm sorry. I have 4G on the mind, doesn't the bottom of the phone? I'm sorry. The 4G hardly ever works, and I'm paying extra for it, all right? All right, so 3G, and I still have concerns, but I guess where I am is kind of a blended approach between Karen and Joe because the, the, the undisturbed buffer is meant to mitigate any detrimental effects between the office and the residential, which right now doesn't exist. But if there is a change of owner and if the change, there's a change of use of the property, there could be some detrimental effects between the existing property and the residential. So I would, I would almost like to somehow make this condition contingent upon something, you know? I mean, in other words, if the, if the use doesn't change and everything's fine, then, then fine. Don't, it's fine the way it is. It should, we shouldn't automatically mandate that there be a planted buffer just because an owner changes. However, I also don't want to strike it altogether and say it's perfectly fine the way it is because if somebody comes in there, a different owner, that doesn't have the same way of dealing with the property owners as, as the current one does, or changes the use of the property to something that, you know, is detrimental to the neighborhood, then people are gonna want that buffer there. That's what that buffer was intended to be there for.
Could the shout become a "may"?
Or just say, "At owner's request?"
If it did say "may," then it would have to be at someone's discretion. I don't know who that person would be.
Or could you say, to your point, "And the use changes"?
I mean, somebody would need to make the judgment call.
Oh, no, if a potential buyer came in there, I think he'd be well aware of the conditions of the sale, of the conditions of the property. So rather than anticipating what a potential buyer would come up with down the road.
Yeah, it's sort of.
Why are we debating this?
Right. If you know what's in existence when you buy the property, you should be able to accept it. Because if you put that clause in, they could go to the closing table and say, "No, I have no intention of asking you to put in that buffer." And then two days later... And then two days later, he's calling them up and saying, you know what, I'm reconsidered. We need that buffer there. And then all of a sudden, the dynamic of the whole thing changes. And that's where I think we're getting into trouble, because we'll be talking to these guys six months down the road, then we'll be saying, but we haven't changed anything. Why do we have to put the buffer in?
And that I agree with, but if a different homeowner, I mean, if a different owner comes in to buy this property, and, you know, the use change, the intensity changes somehow, the number of cars in and out are different, I don't know what you're using the office building for now, but if that changes, the buffer is intended to mitigate those issues that could happen. Right now, they're not an issue, but they could in the future be an issue. So I hate for us just to say, okay, we'll never, forever, ever, ever will we require an undisturbed buffer here, or, excuse me, never, ever, ever will we require an opaque planted buffer there.
Won't the current use and future use be dictated right now by the size of the building and what's on there? So if it would get, one would think, if it were gonna become more offensive, it would have to expand, in theory, and that would have to come before our staff and maybe City Council, or we could look at it at that point.
If I could. And the thought that I've got, and I don't know if this helps you out or hurts you in your decision-making process, but if you go back to 1A, what we have done in that recommended condition is to exclude all of the O and I uses except for office. So, you know, what you're, what we're talking about here is an office being replaced by an office, because 1A excludes everything else in O and I. So I don't know if that helps or hurts, but as far as there being a buyer that would come by it and maybe change the use to something other than office, that's accounted for in the restrictions in 1A.
Well, then, that being the case, then I am not in favor of 3G, because I think you could, I think you could end up making a good situation bad by requiring additional plannings on that buffer.
I was just going to make a motion. Go ahead.
Let everybody make sure, and if you've got another comment or two briefly.
My question is just, would the other blended approach be, does it have the discretion of the Community Development Director? I agree that the prohibited uses effectively mean that it will continue to be O and I. However, you could have an end user that is very different than the current user, that may not take care of the property, that's a manner, and while it would still be an office, that it could become less beautiful than it currently is. And so that would, my guess, that's why the planning commission was trying to anticipate something in that future. So rather than to have it shall be required, could you say that it could be required or shall be required at the discretion of the Community Development Director? And that would allow for the possibility, in the event that you had neighbors that said, gee, this is no longer the same wonderful structure that it had been? Just a thought.
But how do you enforce something like that?
Well, I think it just gives the discretion to the Community Development Director under that O and I. So it's not about enforcement, it's that at the time that the use would change, or it would change hands, or if there became an issue with adjacency, it could still be addressed that way.
What you want to do, Councilwoman Rizal Valius, change the shall to may, and then at the end of the language, put in the determination of the Community Development Director, if the public interest demands it. That's the standard. A lot of times, they'll do that, is put the public interest.
Yeah, but don't we spend all kinds of time up here changing mays to shous?
Shall to may.
That's because it changes the complete meaning of the provision. One of the most important things we do, actually.
This would accommodate the concern raised, but it still gives accommodation for an eventuality that's different than what it is today. Doesn't restrict the current use, it just says that in the future, should something change and the owner not take as good a care?
Well, I don't want to say anything disparaging about Mr. Seeger's, but he could wake up tomorrow and change his mind on how he takes care of this property, and then everybody would be out of luck, because there's no provision that says, if the current owner changes the way he handles things, we gotta put the buffer back in. So that's why I don't think this clause even belongs here.
I think the difference is that we obviously have eight years of knowledge that it...
I understand that, and that's why I said I don't expect him to do that. But my point is, this clause, it seems to be creating future problems.
All right, well, if somebody would care to make a motion, then we can see what's on the table.
I would be happy to, because I had started.
Karen did have spoken.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ 11-13 slash VC 11-02 14355 Providence Road and Haystack Lane by Seeger's and Tindell LLC to rezon from C1 and AG1 to O and I and AG1 to expand an existing building and two existing buildings for a total of 5,740 square feet with the following four-part concurrent variants. Do I need to read all those?
No. Is that okay?
As advertised.
As advertised, and I would like, with the conditions recommended by staff, excluding condition 3G.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we currently have a motion put forth by Councilperson Thurman, consecrated by Councilperson Luss, to approve RZ 11-13 slash VC 11-02 as advertised, excluding condition 3G.
And Councilmember Hugh, I just want to make sure that since we're doing that, that what is in your agenda packet is in fact what we're basing that motion on. There's been no updates. Just, thank you.
Is there any council discussion on this?
Yeah, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
To the maker of the motion, to Councilmember Thurman, and to the point that was made by Councilmember Longoria, fair enough about unheated storage, I mean, if you suddenly need it to be heated, would it be acceptable to simply say the two existing storage accessory buildings, just so that it's clear that it's the two existing structures?
I think it's already on the site plan, right? It's the two existing, so I don't want to, there's no need to duplicate.
They are shown on the site plan.
Okay.
And would there be any potential for that square footage to change under that current site plan?
No, ma'am, not without coming before you again.
Is anybody else, anything further? All right, hearing no further discussion, we have a motion on the table. All in favor, please vote. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Will the clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is RZ 11-06, text amendment to the sounding ordinance to create the film and movie media productions administrative permit, section 641616. This is agenda item number 11091, first presentation on June 6th, discussed at work session on June 13th. Ms. Lynn Tully.
As mentioned to you, this was a topic of discussion at our last work session. The request is to create a filming permit, actually called media productions permit as an administrative permit. It includes basically two types, a low-impact and a high-impact permit. As we, again, as we spoke about during the work session, we have seen several requests for filming in our area, and in fact, even on our own properties at parks and other areas. And we have attempted to accommodate those as best we can, but as a film-ready community, we want to be even more careful about that, and also to find a way to expedite some of those requests as well for these companies. And this permitting proposal does that. So it creates these two types of permits, again, the low-impact and the high-impact permit. It does allow for some specific variances from, sorry, from my office, and allows for a quick turnaround of these permits. If you approve this proposal as shown, we will have to go back to the lighting section of the zoning code, as well as the sign ordinance, and amend them to coordinate with these two items specifically. Now, are there any other questions? I know we talked about it quite a bit in work session, I don't want to have to go through the whole thing if you all didn't want to go through it.
Are there any changes from what we received prior to the work session?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Does anybody else up here have any questions at this time?
I have one question.
Okay.
On page 1 of 5, under 4D, just where limited sales from vehicles are allowed, I'm assuming that would be something that's bringing lunch to those that are on-site?
4D, yes, yes, ma'am, that's the expectation, they would have a food truck.
Okay. And again, as we discussed at the work session, lighting and noise ordinances, those are contemplated under this ordinance?
They are. I would say, again, that there are specific exceptions that would be allowed under this ordinance at the discretion of our office, and those would have to be added into both the lighting and the noise section of our current code.
And those would be time-certain, and they would be permit-specific, correct? So it would be for...
That's the intent, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Anybody up? Alan?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I have a question regarding, I guess this would be 5F, yeah, F and G, I believe, versus 6F and G, or it might be FG and H. Anyway, the provisions that are applicable to the noise ordinance for 5 versus 6, is it just an assumption that there, I'm just wondering why we're allowing for certain exceptions for the noise ordinance provided, you know, that the homeowners, 95% of the current owners or property owners within 500 feet of the location agree to it, blah, 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 under 6, but we're not allowing it, not allowing that exception under 5?
Well, the expectation is that if they're gonna exceed those requirements in 5, that it would be considered that a high-impact permit, and they would be under tighter scrutiny.
Okay.
So that's why they would require the additional notification of the adjoining property owners.
Okay. And then the other question I have, I know this is probably gonna burn you when I say it, but I want the attorney to comment for number 5 or 5 and 6, is it our intent for those to be mandated language? And are you agreeable with the must? There's several, several areas of this ordinance that are must and should, and my question to you, I mean, you know, again, it changes the meaning to say should versus shall, and if it's our intent for this to be a requirement, then we need to change those to shall.
And E is must and F is shall.
Yeah, and you got 6, which is the, you know, introductory paragraph, as well as 5 or must-be, and then you've got some musts down in there versus shous. You've even got one that...
I'm gonna have to remember, that's your hot button.
Well, I mean, that's what I do for a living. I mean, I write, I write a food code, for God's sake. If we put should in, we'd be like, no, you don't do that. Because that doesn't mean anything.
Must doesn't concern me.
But should would.
Should concerns me.
Okay.
Consider must and shall to be synonymous with me.
I do, I do, I think must is mandatory.
Well, then, in that case, there are some, there's several shoulds in here, and we can open it up for public comment and come back to those, but I have several of those.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, does anybody else have anything at this time? If not, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, we'll be able to discuss it here in a few minutes. Are there any people here in support or opposition?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. So I don't, Mr. City Attorney, I don't need to ask if there's hearing anybody for that.
No.
Okay, well, let's close the public hearing, and we can now start the discussion. Alan, go ahead.
Okay, 4E, lighting for filming both during daylight and nighttime hours should be oriented away from neighboring residents, is it our intent for that to be, shall?
And Councilmember Hald, I don't want to stop because I misspoke. I said that it should would bother me. Should would only bother me if it was intended to be mandatory. If should, I think, which is the point you're about to make, is it intended to be mandatory or is it intended to be aspirational?
Would be nice if you did that.
If it's aspirational, then should is fine.
Right. So is it, so with that requirement or statement, is it our intent for that to be a requirement, pending limited exceptions of the community?
Right. When it was presented to the planning commission, they did go through and particularly looked at the shoulds. This is a little bit more of a discretionary permit than we would normally write, simply because we can't anticipate all the eventualities of what these media productions might entail. So we're doing our best to capture a good 90% of it. But, so there might be times when they are oriented right towards a residence, but they may also be filming both adjoining residences. So again, if you make it a shall, technically, we're violating the ordinance, so left it a little bit more discretionary.
I don't see that to be the case, because if I were a filmmaker and I read this provision here, I would have no need whatsoever to ever get an exception from you, because there was never a requirement to begin with. However, if I am filming in such a way that would require there to be lights oriented towards neighboring residences and/or interfering with the safe movement of traffic, I would have to get an exception from you in order to carry forward.
Right.
There's no requirement here.
Well, it says that all permanent and temporary lighting shall comply with section 64185, which is the lighting ordinance. So these exceptions, again, are gonna be few and far between. Technically, they should all apply and abide by the lighting ordinance that's in there. The intent is, as a guide, for them to say, yeah, you really should not have them pointing towards an adjoining residence.
And are you, if you're okay with that, Ken, I'm okay with it. I just, I mean, you know what I'm, you know what I'm talking about.
I do, I do, and I think I'm fine with it, because I think what I've heard Lynn say is that this is intended to give some flexibility to fashion a permit that makes sense for the project, and if you lock shall on every one of them, every time you use shall, you take it away from her as far as her ability to craft.
Well, it gives an exception, though, that she would have to approve it. The other question I have has to do with, is this a 6J? Is it our intent that there be a requirement that if public safety personnel are using pyrotechnics, demolition, firearms, anything like that, high-speed chases, that they notify the city?
Absolutely.
Because this is kind of written like an SOP, contact us, versus you shall contact us. If it's a requirement, should it not be that the applicant shall contact Community Development Director if?
We can add that in there, but yes, the intent is that if they're gonna do any of those things listed, that they would definitely contact us and allow us to weigh in on their needs for additional, specifically for additional personnel from the Public Safety Department.
Would you prefer that that language be captured under J or under a new paragraph?
I believe it can be captured under J, it's fine.
If you're finished, Alan?
I'm finished, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Under that item J, just a question that that brings to mind, if it now says, or if it would say applicant shall contact, would it need to say anything other than just the contact, but then imply that you guys would be reviewing what they're doing? It's one thing to contact, it's another to give the city the authorization to effectively either say, no, you may not, because it's a public health hazard.
I'll hang up the phone and off contact.
Right, so it would seem to me that we might need to add another clause at the end of the sentence?
Well, actually, at the beginning of the paragraph, it does say that based on the scope of the production activity and in consideration of any potential danger to the safety of the community, the police chief and/or the fire chief may require personnel and/or equipment to be placed on standby for portions of the high-impact activity at the expense of the applicant.
And I guess the only thing that doesn't seem to contemplate would be that after you guys have reviewed it, once they, if they shall be required to contact you, that it's one thing to say, well, we contacted you, we're going to do it, and now we're gonna have folks on standby, but I could envision that there could be some examples where you guys just effectively said, you know, that's really not a good idea. And the answer, I mean, I, you know, if we're having a...
Well, that would be a denial of the permit.
Of the whole permit, or just a...
Potentially, I mean.
I guess all I'm suggesting, just to make sure that there's not any loophole, because I think your intent's clear, would just be at the end of that sentence to capture something that allows not just that personnel be on standby, but that at the discretion of the community director, you could also, without denying the whole permit, suggest other precautions? Because this just doesn't really say that.
Okay.
Would you have any suggestion, either Chris or Ken?
Well, it's not the Community Development Director that makes that.
Well, or the fire chief, whoever it might be within staff. All I'm suggesting is that because it involves fire and pyrotechnics, et cetera, it's one thing to have somebody standing by, it's another if there's something suggested that perhaps goes beyond what's publicly safe.
Okay. All right, I'll work on someone.
Thank you.
Bill, is that all you have, Julie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Excuse me, I'm reluctant to put too many conditions and restrictions on an ordinance like this. We're dealing with an industry out there who is familiar and experienced with conducting operations in areas like this. So a respect for Alan's comments on permissive and mandatory conditions in here and Julie's comments here, I'd leave this thing alone, really. What we're trying to do is encourage business in this... really. What we're trying to do is encourage business in this town, and I think we don't want to make it too restrictive here to where we're going to discourage an industry like this to come in. I think this has long-term impact on the city, and once it, I think once it catches on here, I think we have the opportunity to really expand this industry in this area for all of the obvious reasons. I'd be reluctant to place any more restrictions than what we've already seen here. And we're already leaving it up to Public Safety and Community Development Director here to review these permits, and I don't think we, as council people here, have any more knowledge in conducting filming entertainment like this in a municipality. So I think the experience is there, and I think the conditions are inherent to monitor it and restrict it without being too restrictive, so.
Yeah, Lynn, remind us where you got this whole thing, because you borrowed it from somebody, right?
Several places, in fact, yeah. Looked at several places, Covington, Decatur, Savannah, several other places around Georgia. Roswell was one, as well as looked at some places in the Northeast, as well as out in California.
All right. Karen, do you have anything? I think you brought it spoken out. Or do you want to defer to Alan and come back to you if you have something? Karen?
I'm fine with the way it is. I mean, I think, well, I think we need to encourage businesses and all to come to here, so.
Alan?
And all I was going to say is I respect Councilmember Luss' comment that we, you know, are, the purpose of this ordinance is to encourage film owners, filmmakers to come to Milton, and I do appreciate and agree with that, and I agree with the fact that we are in the business of encouraging job creation and business in the City of Milton. I also would like to just make it clear that we're also in the business of protecting the self, safety and welfare of our citizens, and I understand that we did get this ordinance from other places, but we also added to this ordinance. And one of the things that we added to the ordinance was a statement, contact public safety personnel if some dangerous things are going to be done, and I think that that should be a requirement, not a necessity, not a procedure that they might do. I think it should be written in mandatory language, and that's the only thing that I would like to see in this ordinance that it currently doesn't exist, in my opinion.
Can I weigh in just for a second with respect to the comments that everybody's made? I would like your indulgence in changing that last sentence of six J to say, the applicant shall contact the Chief of Police for approval if any of the following are included in the production, pyrotechnics, demolition, firearms, discharge, high-speed chases, or physical stunts. I recognize what everybody said and can appreciate that, but those are things that I do, and the city does want to know about that. I mean, I'm not going to let a high-speed chase go past a horse. So, you know, there are circumstances when I need to know that that's going on.
Thank you for that.
So I respectfully ask, just from a staff perspective, if you'd allow that last sentence to read like that.
Okay. Well, if anybody would care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, you can do it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I'd like to move to approve RZ 11-06 for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create film and movie media productions administrative permit, and this is Agenda Item Number 11-091, and specifically, as put forth by staff with the addition of our city manager, and as recommended by members of council, item six J to read as was stated by our city manager.
Second motion.
No, ma'am, I'm fine.
All right. We currently have a motion on the table that was put forth by Councilperson Z honor Bailey and seconded by Councilperson Tark to approve RZ 11-06 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create the film and movie, movie media production administrative permit, as presented by staff with the inclusion of an additional sentence read by the city manager in six J.
For purposes of the record, is everybody in council comfortable, understand what Mr. Lagerbloom read?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. Councilmember Longoria made a great point during our work session and discussion on this.
I did?
You did.
Awesome.
In terms of requiring, and I concurred with you, in terms of requiring any filmmaker to make reference to the City of Milton, did we capture that? Because I know when Karen Thurmond, Councilmember Thurmond asked if there had been any changes. I wanted to make sure we had captured that. If not, I would like us to add that, since that had been discussed.
Well, you'll have to talk to the maker of the motion.
I think I will. Talk to my own.
I apologize. I don't think that that was added.
Hmm.
Do you guys ever listen to me?
I listen.
It was a long night.
Sorry, Ken, how do we?
I apologize. I think we missed that.
I would ask that the second...
I would, I would withdraw my second.
I would like to restate my motion.
Thank you.
And before I restate the motion, Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so that we're capturing it as would be acceptable to you, do you have a preference for how we state that?
Yes, ma'am. That should be added under Section 4K.
Page two of five.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're adding a K?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'd like that to read?
Credit shall be noted to the City of Milton for all permits as required, and we'll just leave it at that. Some of the productions, again, if they're still shots, they would simply have that in their gallery. It wouldn't necessarily be on the film or on the shots themselves, so.
Should we say City of Milton, Georgia?
City of Milton. Oh, yes, sorry. I forgot. There's more than one. Heaven forbid.
So, does it need to say credit within the film or does it just credit shall be noted?
Credit shall be noted.
Okay, and it's clear where that would be noted?
To the City of Milton, Georgia.
But I mean, that it's within the film itself. It's at the end of the film. It's not just in a letter.
I don't know that, yeah. I don't know that I can't say that either.
It's a part nobody watches.
Unless it's a really pretty bright place, and you're like, dang, I wonder where that is.
You expect a surpriser at the end, where, you know, somebody comes back on and tells you something.
It's from the, meaning from the English language, because credit can be given to somebody without it being within the credit. So it's credit to be, shall be noted within the credits of the film, is all I'm suggesting, as opposed to...
Well, it may not be a film permit. It may be a still shot permit, or, you know, or...
Or a dog biscuit.
Commercial or a dog biscuit commercial. I mean, it may not, yeah.
So you think that...
We'll come down.
So I would like to then restate my motion, if I may.
Please.
So I would be putting forth a motion to approve RZ 11-06, which is Agenda Item Number 11-091, text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create the film and movie media productions administrative permit, and that the motion would include staff's recommendation, including item on page two, five, item K, stating that credit shall be noted to the City of Milton, Georgia, for all permits as requested, as well as item six J, the language that had been added by our city manager previously.
Second.
Okay. Now, we have a motion on the table made by Councilperson Z honor Bailey, seconded by Councilperson Tark to approve RZ 11-06 with the addition of item 4K, referring to credit, and just addition to item six J, capturing the city manager's language. Hearing perhaps no further discussion. Can we vote on this thing? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes unanimously. Will the clerk please sound the next zoning item?
Next item is RZ 11-07, text amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the use regulations for the C1 Community Business District, Section 64-775, Agenda Item Number 11-092, first presentation on June 6th, discussed at work session on June 13th. Ms. Lynn Tully.
Again, this was brought to you in our last work session. It involves changes to the C1 district to include some specific uses that were not, not previously included, as well as to make some corrections and remove some C1 uses and place those in either C2 or as restricted uses. So the changes include adding under permitted uses 1A, commercial amusement indoor, removing laundromat, T, the, let's see, number, excuse me, letter Y, to clarify communication service to read telecommunication facility per Section 54 of the Milton City Code, to remove GG personal services, including barber shop and beauty shop, to amend 00, or excuse me, OO, retail store or shop, not to include roadside vending, and to change TT to gasoline stations with or without convenience stores. And again, this stems from earlier issues in trying to identify which uses are more high-intensity uses and to put those in the appropriate zoning category. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions right now? Are there any comments in support or, or whatever the opposite of support is?
Opposition?
Yes.
Those that don't like it?
Jonathan?
All right.
You need to teleprompt.
I do, I do. This big red script here won't help me. All right, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further council discussion? If not, if somebody would like to make a motion, and a second.
Mayor Proton, I'll make a motion to approve RZ 11-07 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the use regulations for the C1 Community Business District.
Second motion.
All right. We have a motion put forth by Councilperson Thurmond and seconded by Councilperson Luss to approve RZ 11-07 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the use regulations for the C1 Community Business District, Section 64-775. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, please vote.
Aye.
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 You guys stick to us?
Nobody was opposed, any opposed? None? So that passes unanimously.
Sounds like his phone has come, of course.
Yeah.
I was at four G four.
Yeah.
Stand this phone.
All right. Shall the clerk read the next item?
Next item is RZ 11-08, text amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the use regulations for the C2 Community Business District, Section 64-798, Agenda Item Number 11-093, first presentation, June 6th, work session discussed on June 13th. Ms. Lynn Tully.
Again, this goes back to the identification of high-intensity uses, and we've included those uses in the C2 zoning district and clarified some of those uses which were already referenced by the reference to permit any uses that are allowable in C1 zoning districts. So what we have done is removed K landscaping business, as it's mentioned in the C1 zoning district, as well as L lawn service business, O similarly, plant nursery, and then added U standalone personal services, including barber shop and beauty shop, V bail bondsman, W laundromat, X commercial amusements indoor and outdoor, Y flea markets and second-hand surplus retailers, not to include roadside vending, and Z liquor and package sales stores, as well as AA recycling centers collecting, and BB, which is video arcades. Are there any questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Karen.
Why don't we just re-letter these rather than having blank spots where K, J, and O were?
They'll do that when we get it codified by municipal code, yeah.
So that's okay?
Yes, ma'am. They'll, they pick through that stuff pretty tightly.
I like things in order.
Bill?
I have two questions. Item R, what is a service establishment?
Service establishment and, let me pull my...
It's a defined term.
...code in our definitions.
I didn't see it in your, the last...
You didn't see it in there?
...package here under definitions. You do call out service commercial.
Yeah, it's the same thing as service commercial. Yeah, any, we can. Means any business whose primary purpose is to provide a service, and that's as simple as it can be.
Then on W, laundromat, what's the difference between a laundromat and a coin-operated laundry? I wasn't here for that extensive discussion last week on that topic.
Don't rub it in.
Hold on just a second.
Laundromat is a commercial laundry, where coin-operated or other self-service washing machines are available to individual customers.
Yeah, I think laundromat doesn't necessarily, let's see.
Like a C1 would be like a dry cleaner, C2 would be a lot, a lot, coin-operated laundromat.
Right.
Coin-operated.
That's correct.
That's the way I read the definitions.
I think we need to clean up that.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we handled the definitions separately from the, these use regulations. They went through the Planning Commission on two separate occasions, so.
It seems, that seems to make sense if you cross-reference the definition, the new definitions that we haven't approved yet.
Councilmember Luss, where are you seeing coin-operated laundry?
It was deleted after...
It was deleted and included in the new definition of laundromat and the...
Right.
One of two.
That we haven't approved yet.
Okay, all right. So you're not seeing duplication in here. You're seeing...
No.
You're asking, yeah, got you. Sorry, I was answering the wrong question.
So was it deleted because it was felt that based on the definition, laundromat and coin-operated laundry were the same thing?
Yes, ma'am. It's redundant.
We added the words coin-operated into the definition, if you all agree on a couple of gen items.
Does that satisfy you, Bill? You got anything else? Alan?
Thank you, sir.
Is there a shouldn't here?
No, there's not.
You shall do your own laundry.
G car wash. Is it the intent that if a gas station, whether or without a convenience store, has any kind of car wash, that it would have to be zoned C2 rather than C1, even if it's an accessory car wash?
I believe that's how it's written.
Okay, okay.
That it would require a C2.
That it would require a C2 in order to have a car wash.
Would be C1, but if you put a little gas, a little car wash in addition to it, which would be an accessory car wash, it would have to be C2. Okay?
Yeah, I think you're reading that right. I mean, if you look at that definition, it says incidental use of an attached, detached bay for washing cars, and that's...
Right, okay.
It's one of those two.
And then the X, since indoor is captured under C1 district, I don't know that that's necessary. It just needs to say outdoor.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else? Yes, ma'am.
If I may just clarify, and I know that we discussed this, so I don't need to have any discussion, but I do want to confirm that item, either N or O, depending on how it gets relettered, with regards to pawn shops, and then also definitions for gym, indoor gold buying, that staff is, I took away from our work session, that you guys are working on language, working with both our city manager, Director of Community Development, and also our city attorney, to come up with language, both in terms of zoning category, but also definitions, as well as potential regulations, if that's correct.
Thank you, Lizbeth.
Excuse me?
Lizbeth, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's hear any comments in support or opposition.
There are none, sir.
Okay. Would anybody like to, care to make a motion?
I'd make a motion.
All right, Alan, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 11-093, as recommended by staff on page one and two of our packet regarding this zoning agenda item with the following exceptions. The R shall read, instead of service establishment, shall read service commercial use.
Service commercials.
Service commercial.
You missed one.
Okay. And then X, where it says commercial amusements indoor and outdoor, should just read commercial amusements outdoor, because indoors are already captured under C1 uses. I see that on my motion.
Did anybody hear a second?
I'll strike for the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion that was made by Councilperson Tark and seconded by Councilperson Luss to approve RZ 11-08 with the changes in letter R and the, and letter, was it X, as he's spoken to the record. Is there any further council discussion on it? Would all in favor, please say aye? Would all in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that passes unanimously. Let's move on to the next one. Would the clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is RZ 11-09 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create prohibited uses in all districts, section 64-395, Agenda Item Number 11094. First presentation, June 6th, discussed at work session, June 13th. Ms. Lynn Tully.
This is a new section, created to do exactly what it says, to prohibit certain uses from any zoning district in the city of Milton. Those zoning districts, the prohibitions would be including fortune-telling establishments, massage parlors, pool halls, escort and dating services, tattoo and body art or piercing establishments. So those things would be specifically prohibited under this recommended text amendment. Are there any questions?
I just have one, and I'm in, I'm in agreement to exclude these, however, I just, just for my identification, what is the difference between restricting these and say, a, I don't know, one of the adult bookstore-type places that?
It's
Oh, tell me.
It's a First Amendment restriction, and Ken can give you a little bit more.
So it's not a First Amendment to fortune-telling or anything like that?
I don't believe so. I mean, I, I mean, you can see a novel theory, maybe under the Establishment Clause, someone says that fortune-telling is a s, variation of spiritualism, something, I've never seen it done.
It hasn't been done yet, all right. This is for sale. This one, all right.
All right, does anybody else got any further questions? All right, do we have anybody in support or opposition?
No, sir, we don't.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further counsel discussion? If not, if somebody cares to make a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, Alan?
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 11-04, 94, prohibited uses in all districts.
Second?
All right, we've got a motion by Councilperson Tard, second by Councilperson Longoria to approve RZ 11-09 text amendment to amend the city of Milton zoning ordinance to create prohibited uses in all districts, section 64-395. Hearing no further discussions, all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that passes unanimously. Will the clerk please sound the, this is the last zoning item, isn't it?
You got three?
No.
Third.
Okay.
You have missing pages there, Bert?
I guess. Go ahead.
RZ 11-10 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to create separation standards for high-traffic uses, section 64-218. First presentation, June 6th, work session on June 13th. Agenda Item Number 11095, Ms. Lynn Tully.
We spoke about this at length at the work session regarding separation standards for high-traffic uses, basically those uses which would create and generate significant increase in traffic and trying to create a buffer so that those would not cluster. At that time, under counsel's discussion, it was felt like there might be a different tack that might be, needed to be taken in order to address these specific uses that didn't include buffers that would keep them from clustering. The issue was more a, a distance from residential uses. So we'll go back to that, and we'll try to bring this back to you and bring it back forward with that, but you had to hear it because it was advertised, so.
Yeah, and as, as for those, I know a couple of y'all weren't here last week, but I think we all remember what, what this, what this came from, and as, as Lynn stated, we were trying to look at protecting some residential uses that, but commercial. And as we discussed last week, this just didn't seem to quite get where we wanted to. And we think the cleanest way is probably to, obviously, we have to hear this and, and vote on it, and then maybe go back and start from afresh versus trying to
Go for it.
And craft this and just, just get it off the table and start afresh again. So that, that's kind of where we stand on that. I don't, if anybody has any questions or, or discussion on that?
So rather, rather, if it's our intent not to accept this, then it'd be better to deny it?
That's right.
And start fresh than to defer it and redo it?
That's right.
Yes.
Has anybody got any questions on that?
No.
If not, do we need to go ahead and hear, are there any support or opposition to this?
No, sir.
Okay, the public hearing's now closed, so if somebody would care to make a motion?
Okay, so do we make a motion, we all vote against it, or we make a motion to deny it?
Make a motion to deny.
Yeah, I, I believe that we deny Agenda Item Number 11-095.
Second?
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion that was put forward by Councilperson Longoria and second by Councilperson Tard to deny RZ 11-06 text amendment to amend the city of Milton zoning ordinance to create a separation standard for high-traffic uses, section 64-218. Hearing no further discussions, all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that passes unanimous. City clerk, please sound the next zoning item.
Next zoning item is IRZ 11-11 text amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend definitions in section 64-1. First presentation on June 6th, discussed at work session on June 13th. This is Agenda Item Number 11117, Ms. Lynn Tully.
Yes, this request is to change and add primarily definitions to our definition section. What was requested by the planning commission and was carried out by staff was to add any use that specifically permitted, to create a definition for that under the current code. We simply refer to Webster's Collegiate Dictionary 11th Edition or later. They fixed that to eliminate any other editions, but to require only the 11th Edition be consulted. And then we went through and added the following definitions. So if you, I'm gonna run through these fairly quickly, I will stop at one point and call your attention to an area. First is art gallery, second is assembly hall, then automobile and light truck sales and leasing, automotive parking lots, bail bondsman, which basically references our current bail bonding section in our code, body art or piercing establishment. Page six, catering. Page seven, it adds to commu, commercial amusement indoor bowling and skating rinks. Again, under commercial amusement outdoor, it adds skating rinks, in case we get any outdoor ice rinks, you just never know. We've added commercial vehicle, which was mentioned by counsel as part of our landscaping business ordinance, as well as commercial equipment. And please note that the definition for commercial equipment is currently encompassed in this comment box, but has also been provided for you on a paper on your desk with a yellow highlighted section. We'll move on to page nine, delicatessen was included. Page 10, drive-in theater. Page 11, a definition for escort and dating services. Page 12, financial establishment definition, as well as flea market and secondhand surplus retailers. Moving on a few pages to page 17, we've included a definition for fortune-telling establishment, funeral home, garage, automobile repair, gasoline station. Page 18, gymnasium. Page 19, health club or spa. Page 22, we have shown the new definition for landscape business. There's no need to approve that one, it's already been approved, but we're showing it here. Definition for laundromat, laundry and dry cleaning plant distribution center, laundry and dry cleaning shop, lawn service business. And again, on page 24, a definition for massage parlor. Again, I would call your attention to the use of the word principal business and massage parlor, so that those would be uses which are the standalone specifically for massage and massage only. Millinery, mortuary, museum. Page 26, office permanent. Page 27, package sales store, again referencing back to the alcohol ordinance currently included in our city code. A clarification for parking lots, definition parking garage or deck, we referenced parking lot, personal services standalone, pet grooming, photography studio. On page 28, plumbing shop associated with retail sales, pool hall and printing shop. On page 29, radio and television station. On page 30, repair shop. 31, research laboratory and school. And then again, skipping forward a few pages to page 36. Hang on, we're almost done. Page 36, tattoo and body art or piercing establishment, again use of the word principal as the business activity. Theater definition, tinsmithing on page 37, tinsmithing shop. Page 38, the last definition to be included, video arcade. And I would also ask that you amend this definition to include 15 coin-operated or self-service amusement games versus the five which are shown. This was discussed in work session. Are there any questions?
What'd you just say?
Amend video arcades definition to include, yeah, to include 15 video arc, or, excuse me, gaming machines versus five.
All right, looks like Bill has a, a comment or a question?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me. Going over to page 7, calling out commercial vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Well, did you first state physical characteristic, characteristics of it, like gross vehicle weight, number of axles, length, height, tires, number of passengers and everything else? Then, then they go down. It looks like the intent is to add, or is it? This highlighted definition here, is that correct?
Actually, the highlighted definition has been included as a separate definition, if you'll look on this handout at your desk.
Okay.
Commercial equipment was included as a separate definition, and that was a result of the planning commission meeting. They felt like that was sufficient enough, a definition, that it should stand alone, so.
Okay, so it's separate from a commercial vehicle?
Right.
Okay.
It's commercial equipment.
So where does? So in the package, in the right-hand column in the pink block here, are we discounting that or not?
Actually, it's captured in this
It's replaced by that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Captured in this handout.
As regards As regards to this definition here then, if it, does it still follow the same nine specifications that are shown under a commercial vehicle?
No, sir, it's included as a, as a separate entirely, a separate definition. The paragraph below the nine specifications for commercial vehicle is struck out, and then the commercial equipment definition is inserted just ahead of commercial vehicle and specifies earth-moving equipment, trenching, pipeline equipment, landscaping equipment, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, maybe to be more specific, on the third line, you mentioned portable pumps, portable generators, portable air compressors. Portable to me means something you can carry by hand. And there is differentiation between those items of portable equipment and trailer-mounted You can carry a one-inch pump, but you're not going to carry a six-inch pump. Six-inch pump is trailer-mounted. Same way with generators or even air compressors.
Right, I, I would actually expand the definition of portable from hand-carry to anything that moves from one place to another. If it's not secured and fixed to the ground, it's portable. And, yeah, I understand, there are many trailer-mounted generators particularly, I mean, those can get pretty large.
Well, you know, a 5 KW generator, you could throw in the front seat of your truck. So does that still qualify as commercial equipment?
I believe so, yes, sir. I've got some of that in my garage.
Do you now?
I think that last line that says, "Equipment and machinery for business use kept within the enclosed vehicles are not included," so I think that that helps to mitigate that.
Well, it's, so it's somewhat contrary to that.
I suppose it could be. Again, these would only be called into question when there's an issue typically, whether it's a code enforcement issue or a complaint, you know, code enforcement generated or a complaint. I don't expect a residence.
Would it make more sense to use the term mobile instead of portable?
That'd be fine.
I think not that, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I agree that it don't want to be too ambiguous.
I understand.
You want to say portable or mobile? I mean, is that way it covers, it covers both?
Yeah.
Okay, had a couple others. I don't want to get too picky, and drive-in theaters means an establishment laid out such that patrons, on page 10, may enter and park to a view of motion picture while remaining in their vehicle. So I guess it, it assumes that you're entering in a vehicle and you're going to remain parked in that.
That's the assumption, that one was kind of a difficult one.
For the people to sneak in in the trunk, will they have to stay in the trunk?
Those things exist in there?
Once in a while, yeah.
Are there people portable?
Exactly.
I think one more.
Are they really there to view the motion picture? That's the key.
On page 18 of 39, down there in the gymnasium, in the second line, somebody stuttered with their, you have two whiz.
Okay.
I think one's deleted, and now the red leaves?
Is that?
No?
No, sir.
It's been added.
Yeah, we, we messed that up a little.
Trying to get you out there.
Thank you.
I was trying to get that out too, I was just gonna say, yep.
Page 28, under plumbing shop?
Yes, sir.
I don't know many plumbing shops who sell lighting and equipment, how did that get?
It's a specific permitted use, and it, it's kind of an odd one, and so, yeah, the closest we could come would be plumbing and associated with retail sales. What I've seen is plumbing, lighting equipment, electrical supplies, like city plumbing?
City plumbing, I would say.
They do that.
They have both.
I'm, I'm not sure how that speci, that specific permitted use got so specific, but...
Still not here, or you got?
No, they got one more, no?
That's all the trouble I can come with.
Karen, you got anything? Julie?
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Two questions.
Yes, sir.
Was it your specific intent, and I'm good with it if it was, to include recreational vehicles as commercial vehicles, because they easily meet two of the criteria, so I just didn't know if that's what we're aiming at there?
Like an RV?
Yeah, because they would have more than two axles potentially and certainly exceed the gross weight specification. And, and I'm all right with that, I just wanted to make sure we understood that.
I think at some locations, they're used for getting to different parts of properties and things, they may not really be used for recreational.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm saying, if that, if it was our intent to include it, I'm okay, I just wanted to make sure that
You know, I don't
We wouldn't have citizens all of a sudden falling under the commercial vehicle. the commercial vehicle definition when they just are getting ready to go cross-country or something, you know?
Yeah, I don't know that we necessarily intended RVs, other than, you know, for instance, you know, you know, bands sometimes have an RV, some tour buses are almost RVs.
Now, I'll offer a recommendation, so I like what they did with the commercial equipment, why couldn't you just say that the commercial vehicle means any vehicle used in a business, trade or industry that has two or more of the following characteristics?
That sounds good to me.
Therefore, you have still captured the nine, but you're not, you're not going to include your RV that the family is using.
Or your horse trailer.
Yeah. I like that better, rather than being specific as to specific types of equipment, there's a lot of other commercial equipment out there that we haven't mentioned, road paving equipment, stuff like that.
Okay, oh, sorry. I had one other thing, and on page twelve, item number one, under the definition of family.
Yes, sir.
Well, actually, not even item number one, I think maybe a whole permit itself. Is it necessary for us to define something that obviously has, I think, a much bigger meaning in general? Because if we put down on our ordinance is something that I think is, is being interpreted in different ways, certainly right now, and certainly the topic of a lot of discussion in a lot of different courts, I think it'd probably be a better move for us to just take that out and leave that up to general interpretation.
In my experience, when I have seen this definition used, whether it's this definition or any definition, for zoning purposes, it is when there is a dispute as to whether or not something is single-family, or there is a situation where, you know, they're saying many families live in the same house and they're not intended to.
Particularly like a room for hire sort of situation.
Right, and I thought about that, but since it's in...
Dorm, not dorms, but sorority houses kind of play, you know, things of that nature.
Well, I was just worried, because this is a general section on definitions, and so I just didn't want to invite any potential, you know, problems for the city with that.
I don't know that we have in the past had issue with this necessarily, but I'd rather have a definition than not. I, I too understand that the definition of family sometimes gets much more, is much more broad than what's included here, but...
Ken, would you care to weigh in on that, or do you have any?
Just to support Lynn on it, I agree, it is challenging. Every ordinance in other jurisdictions I'm aware with grapples with this because they have to deal with situations where it's a single-family, or there's an allegation by the neighbor that they're running really a rooms-for-hire next door, and so our job's to go over and figure out who can legitimately be there, do they need a business license? Is this appropriately zoned property? And you're right, it's a, it's a truly evolving term.
So, if I hear you correctly, it's the lesser of, having a definition is better than not having a definition?
Well said, yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Bill, you're about at your limit now. We've got one more thing to hear.
Keep ripping away at it. Okay, we're talking about family, and reflecting on some instances that I've seen in the past elsewhere, how do you deal with, and this question's for you, when it comes up and neighbors challenge residents in their neighborhood, when homes are specif, are, come under the single-family residence code, and it's quite obvious that there's extended family in there?
Very good question, because I'd like to know as well.
One way, one way you can address that, that I have seen address it, and again, this may have actually more applicability to Milton than other areas of Fulton County, is, is you're going to laugh, but their septic permit, a lot of times if they have that many people living in a resident, it's very likely that the house was not permitted with a septic system capable of handling that many people, and it's overloading the system, causing the system to fail. And again, it's, it's not perfect, but that's the way we've been forced in the past, because once you have to get into the weeds of who is legitimately family, you've almost, you've almost lost that battle as the government before you started, so you have to look at objective things. You had a permit for a system that was designed for this many bedrooms, this many occupants, you've got triple that here.
What about if it's on sewer? How is, Marietta has an ordinance. Doesn't Marietta have an ordinance that deals with this, where there's being multiple families in a small house?
Athens, Georgia, I think, has one, just that so many unrelated people can only live in a house together.
That's, a lot of college towns have that, and they usually tie it to a historic district as well because of...
And you get into the number of bedrooms, and what's a bedroom, if a bedroom have a closet, you have to have a closet, that's the definition of a bedroom, of course, that can be debated.
So you're saying it's difficult to enforce that if it's a house on sewer?
Absolutely, because you've got to do a couple things that's difficult for government to do. One, you've got to try to get into familial relationships when you don't have the subpoena power, you don't have the right to depose them, and quite frankly, who my, as a member of my family is, the point counsel Longoria was making is evolving constantly, and some of the normal strictures that we used to apply to that don't necessarily apply.
Okay, is there any else, further discussion? I've lost my place in the script.
But to counsel Rehewett's point, between not having it in there and giving us something, and I'd rather have it in there.
Yeah, I think we kind of went on a tangent, but I, I would like to know the answer. I guess there, my answer in, in the case of a house that's on sewer is...
Well, you don't have that argument, I mean, you're not using the size of...
I just, it's just hard for me to believe that you can just pack, you know, fifteen people in a three-bedroom house, and there's nothing we can do about it.
I can, I mean, I can go back to maybe just describe practically how that happens. I mean, I've had an opportunity to, to try to enforce multiple families living in the same house. Alpharetta had an ordinance with my days that date back to there that didn't allow for a certain number of families to live in a, live in a house, and it's terribly difficult to enforce, especially with, enforcing it against folks that don't necessarily want to talk to you. So there's not, I mean, it's not like there's, again, it's interesting to have it, to be able to get in the door and try to start those conversations, but there's no science to figuring out how you actually enforce it and enforce it well, and enforce it without being challenged.
Well, I just had to know that HOAs usually have some type of covenant in their bylaws that talks about what is a family in terms of how you define number of people that can occupy a house.
And you've gone to where I was going to go, a lot of times the, the HOAs will limit how many cars can be parked in the driveway, and a lot of times when you get in these, particularly to what councilman Tar was saying, you see a lot of, there may be noise complaints, at that point, there may be other sorts of objective evidence that this house is being used for a purpose other than what it was designed to be that can give you some unfortunate consequences.
All righty. Have we, have we had the, heard from people to offer that? If there's anybody in support or opposition to this thing?
No, sir, there's not.
All right, well, the public hearing's closed, is there any further council discussion? And if not, could somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, thank you. Okay, I move to approve agenda item eleven dash eleven seven, as provided in our packet with the following exceptions. With the addition of the definition for commercial equipment that was handed out to the council at the meeting this evening, and in that definition, we would replace, or we would add, or every place where it says portable, we would say portable or mobile. In addition to the definition of commercial vehicle, as handed out in the handout that was given us tonight, it would read, "Commercial vehicle means any vehicle used in a business, comma, trade, comma, or industry that has two or more of the following characteristics." In addition to the definition of gymnasium on page eighteen, delete the extra with.
And the video arcades, yes, sir.
Oh, thank you for that reminder. And then the definition of video arcades, we change the number from five to fifteen.
And I'll second that.
Okay, was staff able to capture everything, first of all? Okay, we've got a motion to approve RZ eleven dash eleven, that was made by councilperson Tark, and seconded by councilperson Thurman. It had some, some changes and revisions to it that staff has captured, so is there any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none opposed, so that passes unanimously. And will the city clerk please sound the next zoning item?
Our final agenda item is RZ eleven twelve, text amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend roadside vending in section sixty-four sixteen oh seven, first presentation on June sixth, discussed at work session on June thirteenth, agenda item number eleven one one eight, Ms. Lynn Tully.
All right, this is the longest agenda item in the packet. Just kidding. It simply removes roadside vending, which are your roadside furniture, portraits, paint, paintings, rugs, et cetera, vendors, from the commercial districts, C one and C two.
All right, do we have any questions of the staff at this point? Are there any persons speaking in support or opposition?
No, sir.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve agenda item number one one dash one one eight.
Second. All right, we've got a motion made by councilperson Lust, and seconded by councilperson Longoria to approve RZ eleven twelve, to amend the city of Milton zoning ordinance to revise the roadside vending administrative permit in section sixty-four sixteen oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Hearing no further discussions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes unanimously. There are no items under unfinished business, so moving on to new business, will the clerk please sound the item?
Next item is approval for city clerk, city clerk to serve as chief municipal registrar and absentee ballot clerk, agenda item number eleven one three five, Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, council, we need one person to do both of these functions for this fall's election. The Georgia election code requires that the appointment of registrar be verified in the minutes of an official meeting pursuant to code section twenty-one two two one two. There's no resolution or anything to approve tonight, just ask that somebody make a motion a second and get a vote to allow city, Gordon, our city clerk, to serve as the chief municipal registrar and the absentee ballot clerk.
All righty, well, you heard him, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve for city clerk, city clerk to serve as chief municipal registrar and absentee ballot clerk, agenda item number one one dash one three five.
Second. All right, we've got a motion by councilperson Lust, and seconded by councilperson Tark to approve agenda item eleven one thirty-five, approval for city clerk, city clerk to serve as chief municipal registrar and absentee ballot clerk. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right, that passes unanimously. Moving on to county mayor and council reports, does anybody up here have anything they'd like to report on? Nor do I. Moving on.
I have a question, what do we decide on announcing a dinner at GMA's?
We certainly can do that, that was one of the things on my staff reports tonight, so if you want to talk about that now.
Oh, okay, never mind, we'll...
No, let's, let's go ahead and talk about that, we have an opportunity to get together Sunday night while we were there, and I guess I just need a nod, you know, the way we have to do that is somebody needs to get to the restaurant that we want to go to Saturday night before the time we want to be there.
Saturday night, not Sunday night?
Well, Saturday night's when we need to get to the restaurant and post a notice that, twenty-four hours prior to...
So we would eat Sunday night?
So we would eat Sunday, so...
Okay, never mind, I can't be there. I thought we were going to eat Saturday night.
It doesn't.
Okay, good. Is there a reason why we decided Sunday, because some of us are leaving on Sunday?
That's the night that we were hosted by Safe Build, so we can all get together absent something, you know, specific, if you want to, on a Saturday night. There's a slew of opportunities on Friday and Saturday night all over Savannah for people that want to attach to certain things. If we all have interest in going out together on a Saturday night, the requirement would be that we just get there Friday night, prior to twenty-four hours before we want to have dinner, and post something at the location that allows us to get together as a quorum.
Well, I'll just speak, I mean, I'm in favor of it, just because I think it's good for us to, to be outside of these confines and be able to enjoy one another's company. I think, and it's just the hand we're dealt, I think it's, it's overly zealous that we have to do these things, but understand that, so I'm in favor of either of the evening, but that's just me.
Okay. If we were to do something Saturday, who would, who would want to go? One, two, three, four. Okay, all right, we'll make something happen. I think it sounds like a good idea, as long as we stay legal, I'm okay with it.
It is, and to councilmember Rehewett's point, I apologize, I just want to share with you what I have heard directly from the folks that enforce this sort of thing. This is just the product of a new administration, and I am very uneasy until I get a good sense for how this is going to be enforced, I do not want a client of mine to be the test case.
Well, it's simple enough just to go and take something up on the wall, it's not like we're having YouTube.
So we need to assign someone to be in charge of locating the restaurant and, and posting it when they get there on Friday?
I got that.
You got that?
Yeah, I want to know, I got that, yep.
There's something about this that makes no sense to me, okay? And that's posting a notice in a city where nobody there gives a crap about what we're doing, okay? So you're saying that all we have to do is post a notice at the restaurant we're going to be in?
No, it has been announced in the paper.
I'm saying that you've got to comply with the special meeting requirements of the Open Meetings Act, and one of them is that at the location of the meeting assembly, you post a conspicuous notice no less than twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
Ken's just the, Ken's just the mayor of the messenger.
Oh, no, I know that part, I'm just saying, it seems so.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I couldn't agree more, but if this is the game of hopper techniques that we're going to be asked to play, then we're going to play.
All right. Will you do that?
Got that?
All right, why don't you go ahead and continue whatever you may have.
Just a couple before we go into executive session, I want to let you know, we spent an awful lot of time this week, and we'll be spending time over the next several weeks on the Transportation Investment Act. A couple of staff members today went to Chairman Eves's meeting that he called down at the county building that you probably got an email about. It was from two o'clock until four o'clock today. I'd like to say that we came back with a whole lot of new information that we didn't know before we went. Unfortunately, I can't say that. But I do, did learn kind of a timeline of events, and we'll be watching it over here, over the next couple of months as we take a four hundred and sixty-six item project list, has estimated cost of thirty billion, and we'll see that unconstrained list restrained to a list that we can accomplish in six point four billion. So, you know, to look at the transportation projects that exist out there that are, you know, thrown into the pool at this point in the unconstrained list, we've got to get from thirty billion down to six point four billion, while thinking regionally and what makes sense for transportation as a region. So it's, it's a good process, I mean, we'll go through it, the list doesn't look anything right now like it will look after it goes through several different iterations of priority, but we'll watch that as it happens.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I just have a question on that when you're done with that.
Okay, go, go ahead.
What roughly, what, what kind of value is on Milton-specific projects on that unconstrained list?
One of them's at forty-six million and the other's at a hundred and sixteen million.
Okay, so we ought to be, we ought to be good.
Are the two that have made it in at this point. So about a hundred and fifty million, I guess, between the two projects.
At least we have about six billion dollars, so, okay.
It's important to note that all of the information related to the TIA project is at a newly opened website, and it is atlantaregionalroundtable.com. So any information you want with respect to this TIA process is at atlantaregionalroundtable.com. It's also important to note that there's a phone-in town hall meeting this Wednesday, which is one of the ARC's community outreach participation things. You, if you get, which I'm guessing you do, the news blast that Jason sends out, that was the news blast from today that gave the eight hundred number and the PIN to dial in if you want to hear the Fulton contingent speak about this process, who represents us on that roundtable and who will be making the decision. Keep it in mind that the Atlanta region, eighty-five percent of the available funds, if this one percent sales tax passes a referendum next year during the primary, which is July of two thousand and twelve, what it will represent is eighty-five percent of the funding that's anticipated would be put towards projects on that list that I talked about, the unconstrained list that will be constrained, the rest of the fifteen percent of the anticipated revenues is what we affectionately heard as these discretionary funds that will be sent, passed along to cities that will be able to use for a wide array of transportation projects. It's very, very, very important for the region that we understand this process and that we find ways to support a proposal that's good. There are dire consequences to the Atlanta... There are dire consequences to the Atlanta region if this doesn't pass next July. Um, and I can say that from a, from a perspective of knowing what our infrastructure is, and if you take that and extrapolate it out to the, to the, um, area as a whole, to not have the one percent, um, to do, to just maintain our roads, um, is going to be problematic, and, and we don't certainly do any, um, enhancements on projects that are going to make transportation any better. So, having said that, I'll try to keep you engaged with that, there's going to be an opportunity at some point in this process that we will need you all to act as the liaison between us and your constituents to, uh, pass along the good information as to why this is good for the region. Okay, enough said about, uh, transportation. We did close on the, uh, property on Hope Bowl Road, uh, Friday at four o'clock, so that was done. Um, we are working through a process this week of, of doing a couple of projects, or at least getting started on a couple of projects out there to just hold it in place. I mean, that's obviously where we want to spend our first efforts, um, removing a couple of dead trees so that they don't, uh, run a risk to the structure itself, um, as well as just doing some modest, uh, you know, improvements to the house to make water flow around it better and make sure that the humidity on the inside, et cetera, is maintained constant. So, um, that's our first process is just to hold it in place as we make some decisions as to what we do with it long-term, but that is, um, behind us. I want you all to know that, uh, we've been visited this week by, or this weekend, what is today, Monday, so I haven't been visited by anybody this week. Um, last week by, uh, some representatives from both the Fulton County Department of Health, as well as the Fulton County Department of Housing and Human Services, um, more or less introducing themselves. They've asked, the Department of Health has asked for our support in a grant application they are doing on a countywide initiative. Think it makes a whole lot of sense to do that, so, um, we will be the recipients of some of the, uh, programs and funds if they are successful in receiving, um, that particular grant award. If you have any interest in that, I can get you, um, more information on that, um, as well as, uh, working with housing and human services on whether or not, uh, it makes sense for the Milton to opt out or stay in the consortium dealing with CDBG funds. So, um, I know that sounded like a whole slew of boop coming out, but, uh, we've got to look at whether or not we, uh, want to stay in that consortium or not, and a couple of the driving factors are whether or not we could be a direct, um, conduit to HUD, or whether or not, uh, we can't get even to those funds because of our population size. If we're not large enough, we need to stay part of the county consortium. Uh, you'll probably hear that some of the cities just south of us, Roswell, Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, um, have opted out of that, and the primary driver is because they do qualify by their population to be a direct recipient of HUD funds, um, and don't have to, uh, stay together with the county consortium. My gut tells me at this point, and, and the research that we've done into it says that we are still of a size that, um, we certainly don't want to walk away from, uh, available, availability of resources, and I think, um, we're one of those cities that needs to stay in the consortium. If that changes, I will, uh, let you know on that. Um, I'm looking at my list that I went over at our staff meeting this morning, and I think that that probably for the purposes of a, um, public staff report tonight is good. Does anybody have any questions about anything that I could update you on?
All right, doesn't look like we do.
Okay.
The purpose of our.
Oh, this guy.
Get it done. Um, the purpose of our executive session is pending lit- or, or current litigation?
Existing litigation.
Okay. Um, uh, is there a motion a second to adjourn into, uh, executive session?
Second.
So, discuss.
Aye.
Current litigation.
Here we go.
We have a motion and a second. All, um, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now go to executive session.
Okay, I would like to reconvene the regular meeting. Is there a motion we can reconvene?
Some move to reconvene.
All right, firsted by Councilperson Tark and seconded by Councilperson Thurman down there. They got an almond in it that you're eating, or just dark chocolate?
No.
Okay. Because I was looking for some with almonds earlier and couldn't find any. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any note? That was unanimous. This concludes our regular meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All right, anybody?
Seconded it.
Seconded.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, good evening.